Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, May 14th. We could have a roll call please ma'am to establish order.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Terry McLung?
I'm here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
And Kristy is absent with notice.
If we can stand and pledge allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions?
Corrections, yes sir.
Yeah, with Miss Snyder's concurrence, I'd like to postpone number one since none of the fire department people can be here tonight.
Okay.
All right.
And also again with Miss Snyder's concurrence, I'd like to postpone number four, discussion of remodeling the auditorium.
Okay. Why?
I'm not ready.
Oh, okay.
Are you ready?
Okay. No, I thought the mayor was supposed to be ready.
Also, we need to add an item under new business, waived bidding for the SCBA and the compressor for the fire department.
So number six?
It would be new number six.
Yes, thanks.
Anything else anyone? If not, all those in favor of the minute or the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes for April 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting on April 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This brings us to proclamation that I'm gonna read for creating a Purple Heart City. But before I go, I'd like to recognize some guests of honor this evening at the city council meeting. We have Eureka Springs, we actually have two native sons here that I'd like to recognize. Jerry Weaver is here and introduced me to the concept of the city becoming the order of the Purple Heart recently. Jerry's is with us, as is Sonny Smith, and also Johnny Scroggins is here somewhere, there he is.
Johnny's also a native.
I've known Jerry Weaver, well, not all my life yet, but we've known each other since we were kids, grew up with each other, and I remember when Jerry went off in Vietnam War, and he's a pretty special person. He came back, one of the most decorated veterans in Eureka Springs with numerous Purple Hearts from his operations and different things that was going on during that war. And I'm not gonna call it a conflict of Vietnam War because we lost a lot of good people over there, Jerry and many of the other members are lucky we're here together. So I'm honored to have the members also of the American Legion Post number nine here this evening, and I thank you for all your presence and for your service. And I'm gonna read the proclamation of the office of the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs. Whereas first created as a badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782, the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration presently in use, and whereas a Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. And whereas many former residents of Eureka Springs have made the ultimate sacrifice in giving their lives in the cause of freedom, and numerous combat wounded veterans currently reside within this city and contribute to this community in countless ways. And whereas chartered by an act of Congress, the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veterans' members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most important, make sure we never forget. And whereas we appreciate the sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients and made in defending our freedoms, and believe it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage and to show them the support that they have earned. And whereas the city of Eureka Springs wishes to pledge a strong support to the military order of the Purple Heart and for those who put their lives at risk in service of their country and their fellow citizens. I therefore, Robert D. Berry, Mayor of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim that the city of Eureka Springs is a Purple Heart City. So commander? Commander people, if you would come forward, I'd be glad to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs.
Thank you.
We will be receiving a plaque, and at that time we'll have another formal dedication to the city council, and also signs will be made that we'll be able to put on city limits recognizing Eureka Springs as a Purple Heart City.
Yes, sir.
So thank you on behalf of the city, and thank all of the veterans who are here and the Purple Heart recipients.
Absolutely.
Especially Jerry.
That's right.
Thank you very much for bringing this to my attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
That's it. You can go Jerry.
Thank you Jerry.
Make it short and sweet. Thank you very much Jerry for coming. Never figured out which one was Jerry. That's okay. We got some extra chairs over here.
(laughing) What is there?
I'll get a copy of that tomorrow for...
Oh, I know, he's signed up to talk too. All right, continuing on with the commission notices, and we've got, planning commission has a vacancy, so anyone out there who's been around Eureka Springs for a while, please come in the office and apply. We also have hospital commission that is gonna expire, and then we have an application from Barbara Dix that's up for renewal.
I move that we approve Barbara Dix for renewal. Second.
Any comments, questions?
She's one heck of a great lady.
All those in favor of Barbara Dix's applications, reapplication, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Cemetery commission has two positions vacant, so anyone out there in the city that would like to work on, actually inside the western district of Eureka Springs is eligible to be on the cemetery commission. So at that time, we will commit with public comments, and please remember, we got a lot of people here, and hold your comments to three minutes please.
My name's Dr. Robert Bullford, I have a PhD in plantar science from the University of Arkansas, I'm an environmentalist and a shopkeeper here in town. I'd like to factually inform the discussion about a potential ban on plastic bags. In the town, paper bags are not, by any stretch of the imagination, more ecologically sound than plastic, it's not even close. Comparing materials, plastic bags are usually made from ethane, a byproduct of natural gas produced for home heating and electrical power generation. Natural gas is worse than wind or solar power, but it's the best option that we have in terms of fossil fuels at this moment in history. Paper bags are made from pulped wood, either from trees or from tree farms or old growth forest. Neither of these is good, they consume topsoil, reduce habitat, affect erosion and drainage, and require significant fossil fuels. Comparing manufacture, making a paper bag takes four times as much fossil fuel and three times as much water as a plastic bag of the same volume. The overall atmospheric CO2 footprint follows a similar ratio. A paper bag has four times the carbon footprint of the equivalent plastic bag. Paper bags produce 70% more air pollution, 50 times, that's times, not percent, 50 times as much water pollution, and 80% more greenhouse gas per bag. Comparing shipping, paper bags have a shipping weight of five to seven times higher than plastic and significantly greater shipping volume. On the back end, paper bags produce 70 to 80% more solid waste. Comparing biodegradability, a plastic bag returned to the ground is sequestered carbon. Whether recycled, burned, or decayed, the carbon in a paper bag is returned to the atmosphere. In the oxygen-starved environment of a landfill, paper bags produce potent greenhouse gases as they decay, plastic bags do not. Comparing recycle and reuse, I could not find a clear statistic, but studies have consistently found that plastic bags outperform paper bags in terms of reuse in the home. This is typically less than one time per bag, whether plastic or paper, but nevertheless, plastic bags are reused in the home more often than paper bags. Both are recyclable, both are available with post-consumer percentages. For paper, this seldom exceeds 30%, with the remainder supplied by new forestry cutting. Recycling a paper bag uses as much fossil fuel as making a new paper bag. There's no benefit. It takes twice as much energy to recycle a pound of paper bags as a pound of plastic bags, and a pound of plastic bags is a lot of plastic bags. Comparing alternatives, because of economies of scale and low product weight, plastic bag production is very efficient, counting both the raw materials and the energy used to make the bags. Your car burns the raw material and energy use equivalent of over 4,000 plastic bags per tank full of gasoline, that's 4,000 plastic bags per tank full of gasoline, that's the equivalent, or about the same number of plastic bags who use in a 10-year span. Reusable plastic bags or synthetic fiber bags are far superior to single-use plastic bags, but only if they're used. A plastic or synthetic fiber bag...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jay Galyan.
Before you go, if you'd like to leave your paper with us, we'd be glad to make copies of it and distribute it to the council, so what you didn't get finished reading, we can have.
Yes, sir.
Give it to Madam Clerk. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Galyan.
Hello, I'm Jay Galyan, I'm from Hearts Family Center here in Eureka, and first off, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the ladies and gentlemen of the council for the hard work you do. No matter what decision you make, everybody's not gonna be happy with it. I'm in the same position at the grocery store. If I raise a price, nobody's happy with it. If I don't raise the price and I can't pay my employees, they're not happy with it. The difference in price between the plastic and paper bags, paper bags cost me $35 for 400 bags. That works out to .875 cents per bag. The plastic bags I'm using now cost $16.50 per thousand bags, and that works out to .165 cents per bag. Using these figures, we use anywhere between 10,000 and 20,000 bags per week. The impact it would be to my bottom line is $1,065 per week. That money has to come from somewhere, whether it be higher grocery prices or lower wages, it just doesn't come out of the thin air. I for one, I don't like plastic bags. I'll be honest with you, but plastic bags are here, they are our most efficient use of our time and money to carry home the products that we sell that we have at this point. I just had a quote last week from a new supplier who could give me a better grade bag for just 75 cents more per case. So 17, 75 per case, or 1.775 cents per bag. With that, it'd have my logo printed on it. That being said, it's a better bag, so that could cut down on the double bag exposure, so hopefully it would cut the bag usage down. You know, I'm in the same boat we all are. We have to live on this planet and take care of it. The speaker just before me had some very good points, and I thank you all for listening and appreciate your decisions.
Thank you.
(laughing) Probably the best I've ever seen.
Hi, I'm Leigh Anne Vianisak, I'm a resident and business owner here in town. I'm here to talk about the plastic bag ban also, and assuming that it's single-use bags that you're speaking about, it's really a bad name for them because none of us, I don't think any of us here, probably just use those bags one time to bring our groceries home and throw them away. They're used for lining our trash bins, for picking up animal waste, packing materials, and just from taking one item from one place to another. I've done some research, and I've frankly learned a lot more about plastic bags than I really ever wanted to know.[959.13][959.13](laughing) I'll tell you that some of what I've learned, and I've got some information for you to look over, so I also challenge you to please do your own research. While on the surface it looks good, it does contaminate marine life, it takes forever to decompose, it's hard to recycle. We need to understand what the alternatives of single-use bags are. To have less of an impact on the environment in terms of resources and energy and greenhouse outcomes, you'd have to reuse a paper bag at least four times. You would have to use a cotton bag at least 131 times. You would have to use those green bags that they sell in the grocery stores over 52 times. These will, excuse me, a ban will also lead to the use of other heavier plastic bags. We'll now have to buy trash bag liners, which are heavier plastic, which take even longer to break down. The alternative options we have, these have challenges as well. Reusable bags are breeding ground for bacteria. Some shop owners, they have items that can't be put into paper bags if it's raining outside, they can't get wet. Heavy items for groceries, I sell beer, put that in a paper bag and take it out in the rain. And lastly, the cost, like this gentleman said, I looked into what I'm paying for plastic bags and what it would cost me to buy paper bags. It would cost me twice as much, and storage is also a challenge, they take up a lot of more room. I'd like to ask you, to ask yourselves, why are you doing this? What is your motivation? Is it truly that you are concerned about the environment? Does it just look good for the city? For whatever reasons you decide, your reasons are, if you do pass the ban on plastic, that you will set the first example by getting rid of the yellow plastic bags that the city uses, and consider other alternatives. Evidence-based policy is crucial. You need to make these decisions based on facts and not emotions. When it comes to environmental impacts, it's important not to simply exchange one problem for another. If that's all we're doing, it's hard to see how we're solving anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will have a lot of the same information that we've had. Thank you. Thank you Leigh Anne. If you could see the first to get this, and...
Yes.
I did not have an additional copy.
I'll make one. Thanks Leigh Anne. Thank you.
Ready to go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Cameron Denauer Ward II, business owner downtown here at the Baron Barber. I think one of the things that I've been thinking about the last couple of weeks especially is perceptions about Eureka and about some of our businesses. A lot of us came here to retire or finally to get out from under the man, you know, and work for ourselves and open our own businesses, I know that's one of the things that I did. And in doing that, we have a lot of wonderful people in Eureka who, in opening those businesses, they put their hopes, they put their dreams, they put their money, they put their future in all of, in their businesses. And it doesn't matter if you're a three-star hotel on the top of the hill, or a five-star eatery down on Spring Street, or a three-star bookstore, all of that is irrelevant. I think we need to stop and we need to look at, all of our businesses have meaning, not only to the community, but to our individuals. And that became very, very clear to me two weekends ago with the kickoff with the outrageous parade and May Festival of the Arts. For the first time in four years, North Main was included. We had entertainers in a parking lot, we had music, and we had art down at the musical park, the very first time in four years. I took the time after I closed the shop to go down and talk to all of the businesses down on North Main, and we were all like, what did we do? Why is this happening? But most of all, for the first time, we felt like we were members of this business community for the very first time, by just being included, by just having our little section of Eureka. Eureka isn't Basin Park, Eureka isn't Spring Street, its borders are much larger. And by including everybody, that inspires us to participate even more. I spoke with Andy and I spoke with Mike at the CAPC, and thank them for including North Main in the May Festival of the Arts. I haven't talked to anybody, but now that some of them are here, thank you Arts Council for doing everything that you did for that weekend and continue to do for May Festival of the Arts. And it's just really nice to feel like a part of the community. And the 11 businesses I talked to on North Main feel the same way, they were excited. So thank you.
Bob Jusinski, 46 Hillside Avenue. I spoke with Mickey about this and emailed, or through email anyway, and I think she'll echo a lot of my thoughts on this subject. The basic premise I have is science created this problem, and science is working on a cure to the problem of plastic bags. And in addition to what Mickey's gonna bring out, and speaking with one of my guests who was scientifically orientated, he said, well, didn't you see the article about they're developing a plastic bag which will dissolve within a matter of months? So there's another, you know, possible cure to this. So I think before the city tackles the problems of the world, I think we should stress or solve some of the problems we're dealing with here in Eureka, like the American with Disabilities Act, and by that I mean the sidewalks, and of course, the motorcycle noise, which is air pollution. Let's solve the real problems with the city, and then after those problems are solved, then we'll go on and solve the plastic bag problem. And while we're talking about issues, remember, while I spoke last year about art, wall art. Wall art is conspicuously absent from the city of Eureka Springs, whereas it's spreading like wildfire throughout the nation. And I'll give you this example. I did email that, if you go through your old emails from me, you'll see that, that's not on the side of a museum, that's on the side of a warehouse in what used to be a slum district just west of the city of Miami, and of course, east of that is the Wynwood District, which became world famous for its wall art, and they turned a slum district into a tourist attraction. And if you want to know what's on the left side of that building, I'm gonna give you this picture here, I want to take a look at that. And here's the downside, there is a downside to this wall art. It's created such prosperity, unprecedented prosperity, it's caused the property taxes and property values to skyrocket, thereby forcing people like who live in that dumpy little house with their chicken coops and puppies are gonna have to move, because that is one of the hottest sought-after properties in Miami now, because the developers want to come in and buy up all the property they can so they can build these new high-rises. And if you look in the distance there, that photo, you'll see the cranes on those 20 and 25-story buildings that they're putting up. What I'm saying is, I gave you the article last year about small communities just like Eureka, spending time and effort to get this wall art going. I don't see anything happening here in Eureka. And, you know, you missed the spring season here, it's getting too hot in the summer. And I only got 27 minutes to go, so what I'm gonna do is give you also this, this for the city attorney, you know, my other thing is, don't have planning write these ordinances here, and if you read the city ordinances here, it says that the city attorney is supposed to draft and/or supervise the drafting of all city ordinances. And as David Mitchell and I corresponded with, the problem is that the planning commission cannot directly ask the city attorney questions without going through the mayor first. Try and change that, if you want to change some ordinances, that will help. Thank you. Bye.
My name is Bill King, I'm a property owner and landlord in town, and I'm come to talk about the parking on Washington Street that you all started to discuss last week. Well, first of all, parking is really important. My tenants, they really need that parking up there. There's no other place for them to park, it's always been there, it's never been considered a public safety issue before, there was a dumpster parked in front of the street for about six or eight months last year, no one raised any concerns about access to Point Street at that point, but now it's being raised that fire trucks need to get down Point Street. I have property down there, I want fire trucks to get down there. So our fire marshal Jimmy Kelly, who I like and respect but disagree with on this, he's very by the book, he's very black and white, and this is not a black and white town. The international fire code has to be juggled a little bit, because it can't be strictly enforced here. The big concern, what he wants to do, and what I think is pointless, is to have access to the street from both directions. Fire trucks or ambulances are not going to be approaching the property from the Crescent Hotel, they're going to be coming from the fire station, even if they come from Holliday Alley, they're gonna be coming up Plain Hill and going around. There's no need to access that street from both points, and if you are going to insist that it be accessed that way, from both directions, I think you need to make sure every other street in town is accessible from both directions, or else you're singling out this one street and me because there's some personal stuff going on here. The proposal from what, from getting access from both directions would take away three parking places. If you accessed it from the direction that it needs to be accessed from, it would take away one parking place. I don't think you need to do the overkill, I think you could get rid of the one space, I believe you could even move the one space. If you move the trolley, stop there, I believe there's space for one parking space there, there would be no net loss in parking, the public safety issue would be addressed, vehicles would have access to Point Street. And also last week, it was kind of, it was inferred that I got my permit somehow by not doing what I was supposed to do, my occupational license for the house that I built down on Point Street. That is not true, I did everything I was required to do, I went through all the proper channels, and to say otherwise is just not true. So if, when you have this discussion later on, I hope you will do me the courtesy, if there's any questions I can answer, or if I can weigh in during that discussion. It was said at the meeting last week.
We do let you finish the sentence, Bill.
(laughing) Should we all be notified last weekend, I was not notified about this meeting.
Hello, my name's John Rankin, and I am the husband of Bill King, and we own the property on Point Street. And so I just wanted to talk about, it's kind of emotional, everybody is saying that we need affordable housing here in Eureka Springs, and nobody wants it in their neighborhood, apparently, you know, and that's a big, big problem. You know, we provide, you know, Bill and I have been very community-oriented from the very beginning, from starting a newspaper to renovating buildings and making new community vibrant, where bruises right now, to, you know, Bill had an animal shelter, you know, where he rescued dogs for many, many years. So we're very community-oriented, and part of the reason we've invested in this town... And part of the reason we've invested in this town emotionally as well as physically is because we feel like we are doing the community a service by providing affordable housing to these people. And yet, the city keeps making it really, really hard for people to live in this town. And by removing the parking, that is just another major obstacle that these people are going to have to face. You know, where do I, I live here. Now, where do I park my cars? So, I just think you're opening a big can of worms here if you do eliminate this parking. Because, you know, let's just face it. You know, we all, I was just up Elk Street. I know Elk Street. I know that the car above me is going to not stop. And I know I'm going to have to pull over. And I do. And that's what we do everywhere, traveling around this little town of ours. So, I'm just, I'm really hoping that when you discuss this, that you'll really keep the residents that are cleaning your toilets and serving your margaritas and doing all that stuff for you in this town so that they can actually live here and breathe here. So, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, did you want to read a letter that was asked to be read into the record?
Yes. A letter from Mark Hughes of Regalia Handmade Clothing. He says, "Before we write another ordinance that puts responsibility of one particular item solely on the backs of small business, I hope you will consider the bigger picture and find ways to educate the consumer about reducing, reusing, and recycling their trash. The giant floating island of trash in the Pacific is made up of so much more than just plastic shopping bags. For an ordinance of this nature to be fair, we would also have to ban the use of styrofoam containers and drinking straws in restaurants, and the use of one-cup coffee pods in motels and B&amp;Bs, and so much more. What really makes small business owners angry is being told that we are the ones who will be making the changes that will solve a problem and threatening us with a fine while the larger retailers in our country are putting these bags in the hands of the public at a much higher rate. I hate seeing these bags hanging in trees just as much as anyone. But I find I am more angry about the irresponsibility of the person that threw it out of their vehicle than the presence of the bag itself. Not many people know it, but Eureka Springs currently has ordinance number 2187, which makes it mandatory for all businesses to recycle their cardboard and glass. The city even makes it easy for business owners by picking up stacks of flattened boxes from downtown storefronts at least twice a week. Yet, since its inception in 2013, no citations have been written on this law. And there are still many businesses that generate large amounts of these items only to pitch them in dumpsters. If passed, a ban on shopping bags will most likely take its place on the books next to number 2187 and be yet another unenforced attempt to clean up the town. Being green should be a shared responsibility and not declared to be the obligation of the business community alone. A ban on shopping bags will not stop the presence of them, but we can expand the scope of our recycling program to include them rather than having to take them to another town to be recycled. I hope that you will consider stronger attempts to educate the public on ways they can help reduce the amount of trash they generate, such as arranging school tours of the recycling facility for the next generation. Persuade students, persuade citizens to reuse as much as they can and give praise to residents and business owners that excel in the recycling efforts. More recycling bins could be placed alongside city trash containers at a higher ratio than the current one for every five. Let's work together as a community to solve the trash problem rather than mandating a small group to solve the problem on its own."
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comments.
What about the one from Carol?
That is longer than two minutes. That's the reason I gave everybody a copy of it in their packet.
I can read it in less than three minutes if you'd like.
All right.
This is from Carol Friesen, who's got tummy ticklers. "I, as much as anyone, am concerned about the world and actively do as much as possible to help conserve its resources by turning off lights, recycling, composting, et cetera. When shopping, I often take a bag or backpack or refuse or reuse sacks. But as a retailer, I'm obliged to accommodate my customers. After asking the customers if they could use the bag they have, a purse, or a pocket, we use four sizes of bags, each for a distinct purpose, and each with both pluses and minuses, two plastic bags and two paper bags. The plastic thank-you bag, for example, costs 1 to 3 cents. It has handles, is lightweight, and is waterproof. They are number-two recyclable and can be made into new bags. I reuse them for lunch and trash sacks instead of spending money on new plastic Zip-Loks or trash bags to throw away. They take an unknown amount of time to disintegrate and are hazardous to animals. A comparable-sized handled craft paper bag costs 34 cents. Switching to this sack, based on our average sale amount, what amounted 2% of the sale, thousands of dollars a year, more than enough to pay over two months' rent or over four years of water bills. Non-handled, non-gusseted craft bag costs 11 cents, but does not fit our need. It disintegrates when wet, causing damaged purchases and irritation. It creates more greenhouse gases during manufacture, uses more water to make, adds to deforestation, which causes more carbon dioxide. They are heavier and take more space, so shipping costs is higher and uses more fuel. Paper requires more storage space and truck space. Yes, paper degrades faster than plastic and can be recycled. The deforestation is also harmful to animals. Research shows that biodegradable plastic bags are not better in the long term. Plastics are an integral part of our living and our economy. If we ban plastic shopping bags, are we also going to ban plastic trash bags, plastic spatulas and scrapers, lawn chairs, car parts, bowls, Zip-Loks, water bottles? How about other possibly toxic substances such as Styrofoam cups, plates, and takeout? Or the most prevalent litter item here in Eureka Springs, cigarette butts? Shoppers often need ways to carry their purchases. So, how can we, as the city and as merchants, help lessen the impact of plastics on the only planet we can live on right now? Suddenly banning plastic sacks in favor of other equally evil options is not the answer. Every merchant has different needs and desires regarding carrying merchandise. To micromanage their businesses or create more expense is not favorable, especially in a time when the weather, rising costs, parking fees, and high sales taxes are already causing negative customer feedback and budget stresses. The city of Eureka Springs should consider alternatives that hopefully change behavior over a period of time by encouraging the selling, giving away, and carrying of reusable, durable bags, perhaps with Eureka logos. Merchants to politely ask customers need a sack or not. The use of bags, pockets, purses, or backpacks when practical. Not bagging things that are already packaged, such as potatoes or paper towels. Reusing bags as many times as possible. Recycling number-two plastic. Providing methods of trash disposal that do not require plastic bags. An anti-litter campaign. More litter cleanup days. Rentable storage lockers or packages checked, perhaps at the odd or the trolley. Let's work together by design rather than by ordinance to make our only world better for now and the future without risking the stability of local businesses. Hopefully soon, an affordable, safe, and universally accepted alternative to carrying goods will be found."
Thank you. All right. There'd be no further public comments. Go on to new business. First item of business will be item number two, two additions to the planning commission's previously proposed code changes. Chairman Sowis here. Would you like to start us off?
We.
You broke it.
We added two proposed code changes to what already had been submitted. One is the proposed change to chapter 1304. And it's the adoption of plans. And there was some controversy that when we were doing our code changes, that it was made public, that we needed to do a public hearing, which we did. I did get a copy of ordinance 1054. And there is a section in the ordinance that is not in the planning commission book. And it is after the paragraph that states, "The commission shall hold a public hearing on a plan or plans, ordinance, and regulations proposed under this ordinance. Notice of the public hearing shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, at least one time, 15 days prior to the hearing." If you go back a couple pages, then you come to section nine. It says, "Existing ordinances, plan, and filed boundary descriptions unaffected." The following ordinances, plan, and filed boundary descriptions of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, are hereby declared to be unaffected by the adoption of this ordinance. Adopting the zoning ordinance. Adopting subdivision regulations. Adopting comprehensive sign regulations. Adopting comprehensive mobile home and mobile home park regulations. Adopting the zoning map of the city of Eureka Springs. Creating historic district. The plan evolving from a planning process undertaken by the planning commission created by ordinance 871 as amended in the city council with technical assistance provided by Harbin Design Group, consisting of 38 pages of textual material and two pages of maps adopted by the city council." And it goes on and it goes on. The planning commission felt that we really did not have to have a public hearing for this. That we were bound by this. So, instead of taking it and paying for a legal opinion, we would just like to get a change so that it's perfectly clear that a public hearing pertains to the land use plan, the community facilities plan, the master street plan, and other plans as are significant to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city of Eureka Springs. And our second proposed change is on the building code. And this came up when we did the approval on Judah for the apartment complex. You go right around the corner from Judah and you are in a residential area. There was no signage that was put up for any of the neighbors to know what was going to happen. And we heard some expressions on that. They don't need to have permission from the community, but I think to be transparent, given that we go from residential to commercial to residential, it would be nice if people knew what was going to happen in their neighborhoods. So, basically, all we're saying is a sign provided by the planning commission shall be posted onsite in the interim between the application and planning commission meeting. We're not asking them to send a 200-foot letter to anybody. We would just like the public to be made aware of what's going to happen.
When they see this sign, because I know exactly the situation you're talking about on Judah. When they would see the sign, what would be their recourse if this was disturbing them, that this was going to happen?
They could certainly come and give public comments at a planning commission meeting.
Okay. And for some reason, I always thought you had to have a sign up anyway.
No.
It's HDC.
Oh, okay.
Weddings? This is what I was given is the two changes.
Oh, no, we're not ready to do that one yet.
Interesting.
It was just these two.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from council regarding these two items?
On that first one again, okay, elucidate again on what it was exactly that you want to clarify. Just that one little part.
Clarify that when we do changes to ordinances, of course, that you all have to approve those. And we certainly want to do workshops that we do not have to have a public hearing to do that.
Okay. And it's been a while since I've been on planning. When is it that you do have a public hearing? It's for approval for something.
We had a public hearing a month ago, six weeks ago, for the code changes that we submitted to the city council.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
You had two specific issues that you shared with us. The one was about the public hearing, what you wanted to do and changes. And then the other one was something else about the sign on Judah Street. We have before us, and this packet had came to us, what was it, a year ago? And then we left it with planning to work on because you wanted to do, it's back when Ms. Green was chair, and you wanted to make a lot of changes and clean up the code. And...
I think, Mr. Mitchell, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think that's what Madam Clerk was talking about a minute ago. And that's, the planning commission isn't ready to discuss that.
No, that was just those two issues. We submitted the code changes to you all months ago. These are just two additional things that were asked for.
Well, just ignore what was handed to us. Is this what somebody's trying to say? Because this wasn't tonight. I got it. Okay.
There are two sections. The second one is what you received last year with a different layout.
Okay. Which we're not ready to discuss tonight. Got it. Fine. Okay.
Okay. I mean, you're just saying you put the sign up just as a courtesy?
Yes.
And then if somebody comes to the planning commission and a person has made application and it's all within the definition of the ordinance on a commercial building and somebody speaks out against it, then that means you could deny it?
I don't think that that was the intent of doing that. I think it's the intent of just letting the public know what's going on. I mean, there's not a cause to deny it because of that. But I think people have a right to know.
Yeah, I suppose that's true. But usually, things get published in the newspaper anyway when they're covered by the press and that. I mean, what I'm getting at is that I don't think it's wise to set something up that makes somebody think that maybe they have more rights than they don't because if someone brings an application and it's, and they're, you know, it's picture-perfect, then there should not be any reason for anyone to think that that can be stopped. You know what I mean? I don't know if I'm real clear on that.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I just, I don't think we have that right to do that. You know, as long as, if I'm building something and I brought everything that I need to bring to you according to what's been provided me and you were to tell me no...
I think it's not, it's more to, because of the way our zoning is set up. You go from residential to commercial to residential. That's the reason, is because up on Judah, all that was residential. And those people had no idea. Not that it would have changed anything, but if I lived up there, I would have wanted to know what was...
I don't know what you're referring to.
The apartments, the new apartments that were approved up by Legends?
Would it make any difference, Mr. McPlung, if this, what they're proposing was referred to strictly between... I understand exactly what you're talking about. A business out on Highway 62 having a new commercial building going up. I mean, they're... But if it's bordering the residential area, maybe that's when a sign should be put up so residences might know that there's a commercial project. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying.
They're going to know it sooner or later. If, you know, they're going to either read about it in the paper or they're going to see it going up. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, if it's zoned and allowed, then, you know, what's the point? I don't know, I don't know what you're, if you're trying to create discontent, or, I don't know. It doesn't, I don't see the purpose of like anything. That's just my opinion.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Green?
Well, to answer Terry, no, there's nothing that, our codes have it where if somebody wants to build something in commercial, and it's in our codes, they can do it. But I still think as a courtesy to the neighborhood, to let them know that maybe there's going to be traffic problems during the construction, maybe it's really something they don't like, and at least they can voice their opinions. It's just a sign that's just going to be a notification that a project is started.
Yes, Ms. Snyder?
Was there any recourse, using Judah as the example, had there been any recourse to the neighborhood saying, "We don't want this in our area"?
No.
Okay.
No.
So even though the residence was right there next to them, like two inches away, they had no, what happened to the 200-foot thing? Or is it just that they were behind, beyond commercial?
This is commercial. That doesn't apply to...
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was, had been rezoned. Okay.
Yeah, no.
So they had absolutely no anything other than to say, "We don't like this"?
They didn't know about it till it was approved in...
But even if they had known, it couldn't have done any good.
Yeah, it's just a common courtesy. It's not to cause anybody to get all upset or anything. And of course, this is just a recommendation to the City Council.
Well, it is nice to know, and then people like Terry will say, with the traffic and whatnot, it helps to know ahead of time what's going to be happening.
Ms. Green?
Well, I have a question. Are we going to be talking about the other codes on here?
No. He said no.
No?
We are, this has been proposed changes to the building code that's submitted by the Planning Commission.
Right, but what about all these ones that...
What do you have them read?
The ones that we got over a year ago that we sent back to planning, and we even did a moratorium on new licenses for six months.
I think these are resubmitted, when I have, it's April 1st or something of this year.
This is the final version that was submitted to you all, except for these just two proposed changes that we just...
And that's what I was discussing a while ago, and you said...
Well, I was mistaken. I was looking at something else.
You wanted, you wanted to stick with the two things that Ann just brought up, but I thought we were doing this, because I had a...
I think we can, if you want to, at this point in time. It's on the agenda.
Probably.
Ms. Green?
We, in December of 2016, Mr. Mitchell gave us a challenge to have something done in six months, put a moratorium on. This has been almost a year, and I would like to make a motion that we approve the changes given to us, at least the ones before the two that were given to us today.
To approve what?
All these code and definition changes that we've had for a year.
That we haven't discussed or gone over yet?
We've had two workshops.
Completely. We have, council?
Yes.
Okay.
I went over them today. Nothing's changed in them. They look good to me.
Mr. Thomas?
Weren't these given to the lawyer for his review?
I don't know whether he's seen the latest revised changes. I think he's seen the earlier ones.
Earlier ones. Earlier being, the revised ones being these two tonight?
No, these are the ones, and I'm not mistaken, are these...
These have already been submitted to the City Council.
Right, but did I hear you say that this was in a different format?
Yes.
You had a hard time reading it. Remember, Glenna had it italicized, and then she just, it's a different format.
So, so the city attorney had seen this?
Has he spoken to us about it?
This is what I've seen. This is the older version with the... I have not seen that.
The front page is the two new changes that Ann just discussed, the body of...
You can't pass what's here. This is not in ordinance form.
I think what we need to do is make a motion to have Tim look at this, if this is what the council...
Okay.
...had this, to put into a motion form and for Tim to write...
I'll make a motion that Tim look at this and get back to us at the next meeting with...
I'm not sure if you're going to be able to do that in the next meeting, but I'm giving him at least a month.
Okay, a month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, you know, this, like this line in here that on change additions in 14.0805...
Where exactly?
That was, would be on the...
Page five.
Fourth page of this handout that we have.
Page what?
Fourth page of this handout. If the, there in the, under that one would be the E180-day rule proposed, that said if the discontinuance of use is caused by circumstances beyond the control of the property owner, a reasonable variance from the 180-day abandonment period may be granted upon good cause shown if requested prior to the date of abandonment. You know, I don't know that I can approve something like that. That's just...
Are you talking about what we proposed, or what Ms. Kendrick proposed?
That's, this is what shows in here as proposed.
She has two proposals. One by her.
Ah, okay, I haven't, let's see.
I think I'm going to do a point of order. Yes, sir. Since we're going to refer this to the attorney to put it in a format, and there doesn't seem like it's much sense in hashing through each one of them right now...
That's fine.
Why don't we just let the attorney, and then come back and have our opportunity to go through it when we've all had a chance? Is that fair?
Yeah. It's all right.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to give this to the city attorney to draft into an ordinance inhabit, given to us next month, one month, second meeting in June?
Did you use the word ordinance?
No, I didn't think so.
What'd you say?
Look at it and get back in a month.
I thought you wanted it in ordinance form.
Okay.
Because you can't do anything.
Well, I'll amend my motion to move that we give this to Tim to bring it back in ordinance form within a month.
Eight seconds of that.
Nikki.
I would rather have him look at it and decide if he can put it in ordinance form.
He's already reviewed this. What Mr. Weaver said, if I'm not mistaken, I won't put words in his mouth, says this needs to be put in an ordinance form.
Okay, let's ask him what she would prefer.
Mr. Weaver, do you rather review this and get back to us, or put it into the ordinance?
Probably needs to go ahead and be put in an ordinance or ordinances. It'll probably be multiple ordinances. I've looked at it previously.
Okay, then I will second her thing for ordinance situation.
All right. So again, the motion is for Mr. Weaver to come back, hopefully in a month of the first meeting in June, to have this in some form of ordinances for us to review. Any questions, comments?
Yes, sir. What happened to the first motion? It got rescinded, pulled back?
Yes, this is in an ordinance.
Kind of floating when she can't...
So we're voting on the amendment?
We're voting. The motion has been, the first motion was rescinded.
It was amended to become, put it in an ordinance form?
Put it into an ordinance form. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to put it into an ordinance form, sing five a second.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Chairman? Our next order of business is...
We need to go ahead and, and then, so we just approved the amendment was all, don't we need to approve? Are we, are you sure we're finished with that?
I don't know, are we finished with that, Madam Clerk? Are you happy with that?
Everybody's happy? Then I'm happy.
Mr. Thomas?
When you repeated the motion, you said, "All those in favor of the amendment."
That's what Madam Clerk said.
It's not a motion, it's an amendment. I thought there was a rescension and then a new motion.
Madam Clerk?
Well, Ms. Green made the motion to ask the attorney to look at it and get back within a month. And then, rather than rescinding the motion, she simply amended it to include putting it in ordinance form. And so to revert back to the original motion doesn't really apply here.
Right. But if we approve the amendment, we've got to go back and approve the amended motion.
Good point.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended ordinance?
Motion.
The amended motion?
Amended motion. Sing five a second, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Someone?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
All right. Second item of business is the ordinance regarding the use of the plastic shopping bags.
Move for, to discuss?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. I see the title here says ordinance regarding, and that's possibly with our introducing the subject of plastic shopping bags, which I remember distinctly, because I started it out with something that was taking place up around Aspen, Colorado, et cetera, up there, and what they had done. And then we moved into some more discussion about why didn't we just ban it? So we had some free-flowing flight of ideas at the meeting, which seemed to have created some elements that weren't necessarily thought about when we brought this up, because we didn't, we really weren't putting, putting out that we were rushing into an ordinance. What I thought we were doing was having a discussion about the topic and introducing the subject to this community for further evaluation. But it seems to have taken on this life of its own, and if that's fine, that we have a lot of views and a lot of people have discussion about it. What I think would have happened would have been that we would have obviously done a tremendous amount of research, looked at the best practices, looked at what was going on across the United States. So to do that, we would have to find either a commission that we currently have, or potentially look at a possibility of an ad hoc committee specifically dedicated to the subjects of exploring the issue of plastic bags within the city limits of Eureka Springs. That could be entailing of more than retail. It could be entailing of what we use, the yellow bags, the large leaf bags. I'm not too sure exactly what else you may even want to add to it. Who knows? But I know that we should definitely take a look at what's going in across the country. We've heard a lot of people talk about some new, Bob Janowski talked about some new bags, the cellulose type bag, and I think he even sent me something on it, if I recall reading it. So I think there's a lot of things going on out there. But I know the issue of plastic bags, I know the issue of the impact on the environment, and that topic fits well with this community, its environmental awareness. We're a tree city, we're a bee city, we try to be very innovative in this town, we try and take on a lot of topics that are pertinent. And so I think there is an opportunity for the issue of plastic bags within the city limits of Eureka Springs to be dealt with in a very proactive, researched, thought-out method. So I would recommend that we consider maybe an ad hoc committee. I remember several councils ago, when the topic about the noise ordinance came up, and everybody said we could never handle working on the noise ordinance here. Yes, we did. We pulled a group of, an ad hoc group together, Steve Beecham, Mark Hughes, a whole bunch of really great people, and came up with a wonderful new ordinance that the police department has utilized since then on the issue of noise, and we hear on an annual basis the number of citations. It may not be perfect, and it may not be as strict as some people want, but it definitely was a great step. But what was illustrated out of that is that the community took it on in a format and developed something, and did it very rapidly, and it was productive and done. And I think the same thing could be done with plastic bags.
Ms. Snyder?
I find it so highly ironic that all of a sudden, your tone has changed, since not one single time did you even consider letting the people in this town have input, even though I spent twenty minutes...
Ms. Snyder, let's address the topic, not personalities.
Sitting there saying, "You've got to talk to the merchants, you've got to have workshops, you can't just jump in on this." And you immediately went ahead and proposed an ordinance, and you can watch the meeting...
Point of order.
And find, there's a point of order. It's that you are lying.
Both of you. Quit. Point of order. Quit, both of you. Stick to the topic, please, ma'am.
Fine, I have my points to make. First of all, since nobody bothered to do any research and nobody wanted to do any, guess what? Walmart is not the only recycler of plastic bags in the area. Sunfest also recycles. Nobody brought up Sunfest, all they brought up was Walmart, and very negatorily on that. I already have, for my notes, for checking in, because I have talked with almost every merchant or shop in town, I have talked to our biggest merchant, who is Jay from Harts, I've talked to Jackie Wolvan from downtown, and I have been listening to our U of A Sustainability Mr. Man over there, and that's when you listen, need to listen to the most. I had people, I suggested people look into Plarn, P-L-A-R-N. This is taking plastic bags, cutting it specifically a certain way, knitting or crocheting it. There are clubs all over this country of people who knit and crochet neat little floor mats and whatnot, for whom the shelters, that's how they recycle their plastic. Look at the people we have in this town. Everybody knows how to do something. We can start our own club, we can join up with another club. This is an incredibly awesome way to recycle. That's just one of many, many ways to do it. Proper steps have to be taken, things have to be done in order, and you sure as hell do not start with writing an ordinance. That would cost the city literally thousands of dollars extra, paid to our city attorney, because every time we came up with something different or new, he'd have to rewrite. I got a lot of prices and stuff from Jay in regards to what we can do. The biggest thing that everybody I talked to, their first response was, "Well, if we get rid of plastic bags, what are we going to do about our city plastic grocery, trash bags?" And that's a very good thing. Now, one of our residents from elsewhere has talked about having paper bags where she was from, and I have checked with them for the garbage recycle bags, or for their garbage bags for putting in the trash. They've done some changing, but they are getting back to me with a number on the city, or the business, rather, that does do these garbage size for our trash pickup paper bags. If you check with U of A with the sustainability people, you will find out, just because it's plastic, doesn't make it worse necessarily than paper. I'm still pushing bamboo, because that's actually a grass, not a tree, it takes three months. I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of those businesses. There are a lot of things, but it's going to take a long time. And if you try to force ending plastic and fees and everything else on merchants, you're going to have a horrible time doing it. The biggest idea that most merchants and myself have had is for the city to do all the ordering of whatever bags, preferably the newer recyclable plastic bags, the ones that will biodegrade, put the city logo on it. They can order an even bigger amount than what Harts does, and therefore have an even cheaper price. All the shops would come to the city to buy their share of it at cost, maybe a smidge more to help pay for whoever has to do the ordering, however that would work out. But it would have our city logo. Every shop in town could be having our city logo. And we could even have an art contest with kids on a city logo. This would go all over the country. This is free advertising. It would also help take care of the problem. Point being, none of us here want plastic, but you don't just jump on there and say, "We're ending it, that's it." This is going to take a real long time, and you had better go ahead and include merchants. And just for the heck of it, I've checked with a couple of my friends around the world. In Lima, Peru, the grocery stores only will permit biodegradable plastic bags. In Melbourne, Australia, they have totally banned plastic bags in the grocery stores... In Melbourne, Australia, they have totally banned plastic bags in the grocery stores. They allow the reusable, biodegradable only. And in Moscow, Russia, they, this one I love, they actually specialize in about seven different kinds of plastic bags, sizes, shapes, and everything else. They have no problem whatsoever using the plastic, and they do have paper that they sell to concerned customers, but they're so expensive, nobody will buy them. I have a lot of all kinds of places to go. The Verge, V-E-R-G-E, theverge.com. Just wrote an article early Saturday morning comparing all the different, the plastic, the paper, the biodegradable, the effects, the environment, everything. It was a great article. Just go to theverge.com and look for "Our Cotton Totes Better." No. There's a lot of stuff that can be done. We need to have some major workshops, we need to get together with U of A, we need to get together with the downtown market. This is not something that only the council can or should do. We need to have a regular, like, one person, whatever, doing the scheduling, and have regular meetings, and ideas, and thoughts, and things going together if we're going to get anywhere. And you can figure probably a good year, from what I've been able to read and research, we're talking probably a year before we can actually finally take major steps. That's it.
Ms. Green?
When I left here after the last meeting, and we had talked about an ordinance, I in no way thought that this was a done deal. It was more like we're just going to discuss it, see the input and output. I've been, people that have talked to me, it's running about 1 to 10, they'd like to ban them. But, you know, you guys brought up interesting points. It's not an easy thing. Wouldn't be tomorrow, bags are gone. It's something that would have to be thought of. Mr. Mitchell's thing on having a committee to work on it, and he's right, this is what this city is about. And we're kind of on a cutting edge, and a lot of cities are going with this, you know. Maybe the way we did it the last meeting sounded like we were, "Oh, we're going to do this, and it's done." I don't, I didn't get that feeling. I don't think anybody at this table had that feeling, that we were going to just bingo, and it was going to be done.
Ms. Thomas?
Because the city clerk read back the minutes from dealing with this issue from the last meeting, because my perception is very much different from what's being said
Mr. Mitchell made a motion to explore that we draft an ordinance regarding the use of plastic bags within the city limits of Eureka Springs and their elimination. Ms. Green, second.
Ms. Thomas?
Did I not make a motion that we would handle that ordinance only by one reading per meeting?
Yes, I keep going if you like. I thought you were referring to-
Yeah, okay.
All right. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Snyder favored setting up a meeting to discuss the issue. A voice vote on the motion followed. Motion carried 4-1-0 with Ms. Snyder voting no. Mr. Thomas made a motion for the proposed ordinance to not be read more than once at any meeting. Mr. Mitchell seconded. Motion carried 4-0-1 with Ms. Snyder abstaining.
Well, I just appreciate the clarification, because I don't think it's appropriate for us to, at one meeting, make a motion to write an ordinance and pass that motion, and then at the next meeting, say that there was no mention of an ordinance made. That confuses the community, and it confuses me. Yep.
Ms. McFone?
I think what the dialogue from that last meeting regarding this, the plastic bags issue, has done exactly what it needed to do, and that has stirred up the interest of the community, and I think that, you know, I had as much hand in that discussion as anybody last meeting, and I'm glad it came about. I think it's, I think it's a great idea that we, that the mayor form a committee in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and some individuals, not too, not too big a group, but one that, you know, that can, that is willing to do the study and the legwork and the education like this first gentleman that spoke this evening, was very articulate and seemed to be knowledgeable, and, you know, so we can, we can start the process. And, you know, we may never, ever do away with plastic bags, but the big thing is, is, you know, the sustainability is awareness. You know, I was, I was a very late bloomer for recycling, as far as cardboard, or plastic, or now I'm even doing my glass jars, you know, it's, man, that's huge for this boy. So, you know, it's just educating the people, you know, myself included, that we've got to do it. And it's, and it's, and it's not a one-year deal, it's, you know, it's, it's going to be for our lifetimes and the lifetimes of those that follow. So it's, it's a never-ending process, but we just, you know, we get to get started.
What I would like to do, I don't mean to cut anybody off, but Mr. McClung mentioned it. I had, I want to interject some thoughts here. I had the privilege of going up to Branson last week, and I talked to the city environmental director up there, and they have a sustainability committee. She got me real excited. Thaddeus has a sustainability commission, committee, they're not commissions, they're committees. Inside of that sustainability committee, they're broken up into ad hoc committees. We are so far ahead of a lot of cities in Arkansas for recycling. Tree City, Bee City, we're the first bee city in Arkansas, we're the first tree city in Arkansas, we were the first recycling city in Arkansas. We have a lot going for us right now, but there's so much more within this sustainability issue, and it's not only plastic, but it's a lot of other things that go on, that affects everyone in our community, and not only, you know, the rest of the world, in a sense. So what I was hoping to do was to establish a sustainability committee with some key people, including department heads, because a lot of it starts with department heads, making sure these things work that we're talking about. And then out of that, having some subcommittees. One of them would be people who look at plastic bags. Ms. Snyder and I, when I first became mayor, and she was on city council, we went around and talked to the recycling, Kell County Solid Waste Recycling, about, she had ran across a gentleman who invented or came up with a concept of burning plastics, and we tried to figure out a way to get that done-
For fuel.
-that would turn into fuel. And there's still a lot of things out there, and that's where I would like to see this city go, is for us to do this. This isn't going to, when we, you know, it sounds good when we do the plastic bags, but we can't do this overnight, like people said. It's going to take a long time, and it may not be the solution for us. But there, at least we can explore the options, and like Mr. McClung said, and Ms. Snyder, getting other people involved, so we can get it. Jay should be very much involved, the other, small business owners, large business, and the city council, plus department heads again, because they all work together, and if not being able to enforce it or work it, then these aren't any good. Branson has their sustainability committee, is people who came up with a good, sustainable idea that saves money and is best for the environment, and is able to be put into practice, and works for a year. There's actually, they get a financial award or a day off, depending on the value of whatever suggestion they come up with. Some of them were changing systems out on police cars and saving gas. There's a whole system that we can look at, I think, within our community. And that's where I would hope we would go to with this discussion. Okay. I'm sorry, that's my two cents. Mr. Mitchell?
I think that's great. I just want to draw something back to, even that you brought up. The motion was to explore. I think a lot of people forgot the word "explore," and, because there's a big, a lot of meaning to that. But I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that the mayor, that we empower the mayor with whatever he needs to develop the sustainability committee and start the process.
I'll second.
Ms. Snyder?
Since we do have a vote on an ordinance happening, I'd like to get that ordinance delayed.
We don't have any votes.
That's what it said.
There's no motion for an ordinance.
What was that?
Is there?
Actually, there was, and, Mr. Mitchell, this is verbatim from the date. And so, yes, this is, this is the standing.
Okay, the ordinance made a motion to explore that we draft an ordinance.
It was, there was a pause. Here, I'll hand it to you.
To draft an ordinance regarding the use of plastic bags within city limits and their eliminations.
It, there's no timeframe on it, it's just-
To explore that we draft an ordinance.
Explore.
Counsel?
What did I understood? Why not just get rid of the ordinance until we're ready? Because if it's six months to a year, why do we need to have this thing hanging over heads?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What, what's, what's, what are we struggling with now? I'm sorry. Well, Mr. Mitchell, the minutes state, "Mr. Mitchell made a motion to explore, comma, that we draft an ordinance regarding the use of plastic bags within the city limits of Eureka Springs and their elimination." Ms. Green, second. Okay. So we're dealing with that motion?
Well, no.
There's something with that.
No. He made a motion just a little, that was last meeting, that's history. He made a motion just a little-
That's what we're talking about now.
He just made a motion a little bit ago that we, we approve that you-
Correct.
...appoint a committee, so what's wrong with that? Well, can't we do that?
I asked to have the ordinance delayed, or postponed, or amended.
Ms. Snyder seems to feel like we're still dealing with the ordinance. That ends the motion on the table.
If you just, if you can just let something just lie there, and it just lies there, don't worry about it.
Yeah. So you could throw it out, couldn't you?
We are dealing with this committee that would include looking at plastic bags. That is, the motion is, I don't repeat the motion again, I'm sorry, now I'm all bummed.
I did modify direct, or whatever it was, to ask the mayor to appoint a committee to-
On sustainability.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Thomas?
Oh, now that it says "ask," I have no problem.
Ms. Snyder?
As long as it includes the whole council, if they so choose to participate, that would be fine. But I think as important and impactful as this issue is, that all council members should be permitted to be sitting in on these meetings or taking part, what have you, however you want to work that.
Council members are always available to include any meetings.
Right. I'm talking about being an active member, like, did not happen with food.
If you want to amend the motion, feel free to.
Well, to, just to include council members.
So the motion is to include all council members at their discretion.
I don't want to be honest.
She didn't say it was a motion, did she?
No, he said that's amending the motion.
I said if you want to amend the motion.
Oh, okay.
And do you want, you wanted to amend the motion?
Not me.
No, I said, as long as council can be included, or the council needs to be included.
Are you wanting to amend the motion, to include the council members at their discretion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
This is very important to the town, is the council do it.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, that amendment fails. Back to the original motion. Yes, sir.
When I made the motion, I moved the authority, the responsibility, to the mayor, who is the administrator of the city, to develop it and do what was necessary. I didn't put any restrictions on it, and that's my comment.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to allow me to establish a committee on sustainability, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I thought it was to ask you to establish a committee. You don't, we don't, you already have the authority to establish a committee.
You're asking me to establish. The motion was to ask me to establish.
Ask.
Yes. Okay. Are we done with that?
I hope so.
We need to vote.
Oh, so we did vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Oh, I was.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, discussion of the wall, supporting 38 Prospect Street.
So moved to discuss.
You have a second?
A second.
Where is my paperwork on that? I don't seem to have it. Anyway, all right. The, this came up last week, when I was notifying the city that we'd been asked to participate in rebuilding the wall along Ella Street from 38 Prospect Street. Question is, why did we do that? And I said that the council approved doing, accepting responsibility, the stone wall, back sometime, a long time ago. Actually, it was 12 years ago. And I was actually on the city council at that time, along with Mr. McClung.
That's correct.
So I think everybody has a copy of the, I'm not sure what this was, that was filed in the record from the Veranda Inn, but it was basically, "Eureka Springs City Council, sitting in the stone wall appeals, voted unanimously to accept 50/50 responsibility with the property owners for the stone wall, a portion of which is in the city's easement, Lot 4, 5, and 6 of Block 44 of Clayton Edition, commonly known as 38 Prospect." So I brought this up just for your information. There's no action that needs to be taken, it's more for just information. Yes, ma'am?
So notice, basically what you're saying is because half of the wall was on city and half was on private, that's why we ended up doing this? There's a map?
No, I'm saying that we're doing it because the city council voted under the Board of Appeals to do that, and then they filed a document with the city clerk noting that, so it's part of the legal record.
Right, but that's, I mean, it was because city owned half of it.
It's on the city properties, correct.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this, this is a done deal. When, what do we have to do to get the process started?
Nothing, this is just for your information.
Okay, so are we going to fix it, or?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
So we have to make any motions or anything?
Nope, there's no action that needs to be done by the city council.
You're just informing us.
I'm just, this is a motion, just to information.
Okay.
So, let me get back down to, oh, the new item, waive bidding on the SCBA compressor. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
This, this is within our budget. We talked about this during the budgets, about the need to, for the fire department to purchase 10 self-contained breathing apparatuses and the related accessories. We were lucky last year, getting a grant, or the year before. We applied for a grant last year and this year, and were not able to receive one. So we do need to do this. These units are being outdated, and they're actually, are not going to be able for us to use them if we don't replace them. The units, the reason we're going, asking for the waiving is because it's, they're manufactured by Scott, which is the same equipment that we have, and what we're using with the accessories and everything. This is the only company that does this, these units. Mr. Mitchell?
I make a motion, we sign this ordinance a number, and read it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Ms. McFone.
So, did we budget for this?
Yes, we did.
That's the thing I want to make sure-
It's in the budget, but the council needs to.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that the public's aware that it's not, this is not a surprise.
We budgeted, and now did the capital for the fire department.
That was the only question I asked.
All right, all those in favor of signing this a number and reading it for the first time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The ordinance number will be 2266. An ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purpose of purchasing self-contained breathing apparatus- self-contained breathing apparatus and compressor unit, whereas the City of Eureka Springs Fire Department is desiring to purchase 10 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus and related accessories for a cost not to exceed $41,535.16, as well as one Scott compressor unit and related accessories for a cost not to exceed $74,921.88, over the next one year...
Month?
One month period, and whereas the fire chief has investigated the manufacturers of the required air packs and compressor to determine the one best desirable for the city's needs, and whereas equipment compatibility, safety, and cost efficiency requires the continued use of proprietary equipment manufactured by Scott Health and Safety from the dealer Emergency Vehicle Specialist, that is EVS of Conway, Arkansas. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 3.04.02 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, the council of said city finds that this being an exceptional situation in which the procedures for competitive bidding are deemed not feasible or practical, competitive bidding is hereby specifically waived and the city fire department is authorized to purchase up, purchase up to 10 units of self-contained breathing apparatus manufactured by Scott Health and Safety from EVS at a cost not more than $6,850 per unit, and a comparable compressor at a maximum cost of $74,921.88. Purchases shall be completed no later than June 4th, 2018. Section 2, that all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 3, that each of the provisions of this ordinance are severable, and the decision, the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, I do have a question, I'm sorry. It, I'm just a little bit confused by the dollars, and I just need clarification. That 10 Scott air packs not to exceed $51,500 change for the cost of those 10 units, plus an additional $74,000 for the compressor, is that correct? Is it, is that two separate things, or is it the $74,921 is the total for everything?
No, the Scott, the compressor is for $74,921.
Okay, 'cause then it says down below.
I agree, I see where you're coming from. What I'd like to do is go ahead and pass this on the first reading, and let me get back and rearrange these figures, because I think the cost actually should be $68,500 for 10 units.
Yeah.
Because I think last year, or the year before last, we were budgeting almost $8,000 per unit.
Yeah, totally.
So if we could read this, or pass this on first reading, and then I'll get back.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2266 on the first reading.
Second.
So it could be done on the 29th and still meet the mark?
Yeah, yeah. We need to have it done by June 4th, so we get this in the next meeting, we get it back there. Does anybody else have any other questions while we're reading this?
The next meeting will be soon enough?
Beg your pardon?
The next meeting will be soon enough?
Yeah, as long as we get it done by June 4th.
Okay.
I just, I'm wondering if that's not supposed to be compatible instead of comparable?
Kind of comparable or compatible? I would think comparable.
Compatible or comparable?
Probably compatible.
That makes more sense to me.
Probably compatible.
Compatible.
All right. Any further questions? If not, we'll move on to our...
We need a vote, sir.
All those in favor of the ordinance being read on the first reading, signify... No, I need a motion.
I thought that I made that.
He did second it.
We got a second?
We both seconded it.
Okay, so now we just need to vote, all those in favor of approving the ordinance on the first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you. All right, that comes up with our ordinance number 2265 for the third reading.
Make a motion to read the third. Uh, ordinance number 2265, do you read for the third reading?
Second.
Okay. Mr. McClung?
We had a little discussion on this at the last meeting about, and I think Lonnie's here, so I just saw him up there, so I'll just shut up for the moment, how's that?
I'm quietly sitting over in the corner.
All right.
I'm Lonnie Clark, Director of Finance for the City of Eureka Springs, and I would like to address some of the, uh, discussion about ordinance number 2265 that occurred at the last meeting. First of all, I stand here and tell you that I made a mistake, and I want to explain that mistake, and I want to thank Mr. Knowles for calling your attention to that mistake. The mistake was made, and you have the proper amortization schedule before you today, and the amortiz, the ordinance itself is correct. There's nothing in the verbiage in the ordinance that changed. It was the amortization schedule, which was prepared at a different time than the ordinance, that had the incorrect numbers on it. And I will explain how that occurred, and I have discussed, the mayor and I have discussed on numerous occasions, the proper prudent fiscal management of the city, and the proper prudent management of the finances of the city, in cash management and in the liabilities that the city has. What has been before you has been a debt reduction program, and you have seen two phases of it. As I discussed with the mayor, we did it, we were going to try to do it in three phases. First of all, was to pay off the bonds for the police facility, which we have done, that was brought before you. The second component of this three-phase program was to pay off these two bond issues that are financed and in the water sewer, which this is what this ordinance is to do. The third phase has not come before you yet, because I've been working on that, and that was then to pay, and this was to pay these two bond issues off in the next five years. The third phase was to get the city of Eureka Springs out of bonded debt by 2025, and that's what I've been working on, which, there's another bond issue, as you all remember, that you get a copy of on the bottom of your budget report every month, and it's a sales tax bond, which is outside the bounds of the water sewer department. However those funds were used, I believe, in, in the treatment plant, or, I wasn't here when the bond was, well, I was from the 12th, but it was a refinancing. But anyway, that's the program, and so what happened was, at different times, I put the, the ordinance together, the verbiage, with the help of the city attorney, and then I put an amortization schedule, which when I cut and pasted my worksheet, I cut and pasted the wrong one for the amortization schedule that you got last time. Now that amortization schedule would work, but it would take more of the INI funds than this one. So I just want to correct that, because what we're doing in this amortization schedule that you have before you, is each year, in order to pay these two bond issues off, the first one, 2010 will not change, it'll be paid off at 12, 12/31/21. Then those payments will roll over and start being applied to 2008 issue, and those will be paid off under this current schedule, and 12/31/22, which is five years, and that was our objective when we started. This will require, from the INI funds, $23,624 per year, which what we have budgeted and what we, looks like we're gonna hit, that's gonna be about a 10% take out of the INI funds, leaving about 90% in there for other projects that you deem, you as the council deem appropriate. So, with that explanation, I stand up here and tell you, you have the correct amortization schedule before you today, you didn't have last time, the last one would work, it wasn't that it was totally out of left field, but that was part of the component that you hadn't seen yet that I was working on. So at any rate, we may or may not be bringing that one on, but, you know, I think that having the city have at least an objective of getting out of debt, to me, that's, that's major, because I challenge you to find another city, another town, that has bonded debt, that has even a program where they are going to try to retire that debt at some future date, have a target to do that. Now let's talk about, if I might, continue.
Keep going, just a second, Mr. Mitchell.
Let's talk about why we're doing this and what benefit there might be. The comment in these comments section here is that the $72,000 of interest that would be saved would not be enough to really make it worthwhile to use the INI funds that was projected to be used in the other amortization schedule. And as I told the city clerk, I believe earlier today, the interest savings is secondary, because associated with these bonds, you're under the authority of the Securities and Exchange Commission, and they ultimately will call the shots. Additional costs that we have, in, in addition to the interest that we're having to pay, is we have the BKD audit that's referred to in this information here, that's about $25,000 a year. We have another $5,000 approximately in attorney fees and custodian fees. So you can figure about $30,000 a year that this is costing us, so five years, that's, you know, pretty easy to figure. So, anyway, there, but not only are we paying that money out, but we are under the thumb of the Securities and Exchange Commission, and we, if we don't meet those commitments, ultimately, they can come and take over the situation, the system, and say, you know, this is what you're going to do. So, anyway, uh, just, you know, and as far as the water loss, that's talked about in here, we've been talking about that for how long, Mr. Mitchell?
Six years.
Okay, and we've been working on it.
For six years.
And we've been hammering on it. We, y'all passed, you know, and approved the meter change out, and that has helped some, not as much as we wanted, but it's helped some. Not too long ago, y'all approved a water leak detection piece of equipment to be purchased, and the training for it and everything, and, you know, I don't know, and I think you are getting now, maybe quarterly, water loss reports. And so, you know, it's not something that occurred, the water loss didn't occur in the last year, or the last six years, it's been building for a long time, and it's gonna take a while to fix it. And, you know, I've had people stop me outside these doors right here and say, I can solve that problem. Well, see, I'm the finance guy, I'm not the water guy, I don't know anything about that sort of stuff, I just know this. But, you're talking about some, some of the leaks, and mayor, correct me if I'm wrong here, but some of the leaks have been identified, but we're coming into a season where you really can't tear up the streets and whatever you gotta do, right at this point in time. I mean, we're gonna have to wait until next fall or winter to try to fix some of these things, so it's, it's not gonna go away very quickly. It is gonna go away and be decreased, I'm confident of that, because you are sitting here, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. McClung, and you're keeping your finger on it, you know, as well as other people. This water loss is gonna go away, or gonna go down, according to my research, we'll be lucky if we ever get it down to just a 20% loss. So, anyway, with that, you know, it's up to you, this amortization schedule, I've been over it, trying to make it more reader-friendly as possible, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to compliment you on taking the, the data that Eric Knowles so graciously found and, and did a good job bringing to council, and, and you, you acknowledged him, and I appreciate it, because, you know, everybody has different views and eyes, and you took a look at it, I think it's absolutely great. For six years, I've absolutely been behind you 100% in trusting your data.
Thank you.
And I still continue to do that, I have not changed that in any form. My, I have a question, because the amortization schedule is an attachment to the ordinance, and we're on the third reading of the ordinance, by change in the amortization schedule, it makes no difference in the third reading, would that be correct for the attorney?
I would suggest that you make an amendment saying that you are attaching a new one, if it's passed, and I think it is perfectly fine at that point.
Thank you for that, and everything. And I 100% support paying off the bonds and continuing to do that, but I, unless I'm mistaken, I thought you said that you're actually using less of the INI funds, which actually goes back to what Mr. McClung wanted to do, he wanted to have more money from the INI all along to do the repairs over these five years. So in essence, now what's happened with this new amortization, we have, to me, a win-win. We're paying off the bonds and we have money to fix, so...
Exactly.
I'm 100% behind it, and, anyway, I'll turn it over, sorry.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with David 100% there, and this was, this was so much easier to follow and, and understand for me, and, and, and I'm tickled, I really am, and, and I just want to say that, that the only disappointment I have is that I thought we were gonna do, start on the one on Plainor Hill this last winter, and we did not, on that major repair, that's, that's not your ballpark, I know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not helping you for that.
I know.
You get, but next time you show up for work, bring your pick.
Well, I've got one over there in the back of my car, right there. But at any rate, I agree, it's, it's more of a win-win. Now, the other one would work, don't misunderstand me. The other one would work, but it does what you're saying, it does what you want to do, and, you know, if there... to do, and, you know, if there are any other questions, you know, and then this third component, to get the city, I want to emphasize that, you know, the objective, at least right now, for prudent fiscal management of the city, is to try to get this bonded debt taken care of by 2025. And, you know, there may be projects come along that you all, as council, want to refinance some of these bonds or go into another bonding situation, but that's up to you. But right now, and as I told the city clerk earlier today, I'll be in a home by 2025, so it won't make any difference.
No, you're going to be in Belize.
Lonnie? If we're going to amend something to include the revised...
I didn't think we would, but on the vice of council, I suggest you do it.
There is one little tiny error on this one, just...
Oh, it's certainly not.
Huh?
Certainly not.
Just down there at the bottom on the 12-1-2022, those things are out of line. They need to be bumped up a line, where it says additional I, additional 10 and I and I.
Oh.
Yeah, it does.
I corrected it. I corrected it. But, see, I made a change up above that. Didn't move all the commas up.
So...
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, I'm just, so our amended would include that change?
So, we need a motion then?
We're not dealing any, with the amortization chart at all. Like, at the moment, we're just dealing with the motion.
Well, I thought we were going to amend the ordinance to reflect...
Madam Clerk, I think he's saying that I need to make this change and redistribute the correct one, just for aesthetics.
Acceptable.
And I will do that in the morning.
Mr. Captain, Mr. McCall?
I just think for clarification, we don't, we don't read this part into the record anyway. So, so it's, I mean, we all understand what it's going to be. I think the press can have a copy of this, so they can hold our feet to the fire that we're not doing something other than what we said we're doing.
I have some extra copies.
They have it.
It does have there.
Is that...
They have it.
The city attorney suggested that under Section 3, we might add that the attached amortization chart shall be used as a guide.
There you go.
One other thing before you vote.
And that notes that there is an amortization chart attached.
One other thing I'd like to say, if I might, before you take the vote, in the ordinance, if you'll remember, council has absolute control over how much of these funds go to pay on the debt. You have that authority. Continue.
What we need, what, we need to make a motion now to, to, to... Okay, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Do you want to amend, amend?
Well, I think I make the motion to do that, and then we read it, and then we make that amendment and add to it. Is that not the correct way to do that? Yeah, so, I can make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2265 for its third and final reading.
Second.
By title only.
By title only, that's correct.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Uh huh, yes.
Five, zero.
Okay.
So, let's read it, okay?
I think, I think I should make the motion for passage, and then we make the amendment, or we actually vote.
The vote was to read by title only.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, I think it's a good idea that you do that.
Well, it's a good thing all of us are here. Ordinance number 2265, an ordinance clarifying the use of funds to retire the 2008 and 2010 water and sewer bonds earlier than their scheduled maturity dates.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2265 on its third and final reading.
Second.
And now, now somebody can amend it.
Okay, now we need an amendment to Section 3, saying the attached amortization chart shall be used as a guide.
Excuse me, just a second. Because it's the third reading, it needs to be voice, I mean, roll call. No, they need to...
We're not voting yet, though.
They're going to hold off the vote. To an amendment. God, someone.
So, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we amend Section 3, and including that, a statement to the effect, ordering to be determined by the attorney that, that the, that the addendum attached amortization schedule be used as a guide for this ordinance.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Can we hear your call on the other end?
Yep.
So, this is on the amendment to change, to add to Section 3, that the attached amortization chart shall be used as a guide.
Okay.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Okay, now we have a motion to approve ordinance 2265 on its third and final reading by the amended ordinance, by title only. Do we already have that motion?
Yes.
The motion...
Yeah, that's there, we're ready to vote on it.
And so, you made that motion?
Yeah.
And I seconded.
Okay, then the order got switched, so I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Mr. Clerk, thank you very much for all your time and you go at this effort and revising this, and I know it's, it's a, how you can go, thanks, Mr. McCall, for wanting to take six of us in the court.
Did you thank Eric?
Sorry, and Eric.
I thought you might have emailed him.
All right, that brings us up to item number three, motion to discuss municipal city attorney's opinion on the parks' right to enter into contract.
Motion to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Waiver, turn it over to your...
Having talked a little bit with the municipal league, having looked at our ordinance that creates the parks, having looked at various state law, it is my opinion that parks can probably enter into this unless you want to dissolve them at their leisure. Way it was created, they were created to be a much more independent body than most of our commissions, and they were given the authority to enter into contracts. Now, I think there's a limit to what they could limit, enter into, that I don't think they can go out and spend city funds to buy real estate or sell city real estate, because the state law specifically tends to eliminate that. But for what they're trying to do with the greenhouse, unless you want to take over their position, I think they probably can move forward.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, I'm not an attorney, and I read that again, and there was no doubt they have the ability to enter that in recreational activities, that's a given. In the normal course of operating, the parks absolutely has that authority. That was never the question, that they have the authority. You seem to be forgetting, however, on January the 8th, at the first meeting, unfinished business, update on contract with the community center. Mr. Mitchell made a motion to suspend all engagement with the Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation until such time as the city of Eureka Springs elected officials, in conjunction with legal counsel, has the opportunity to conduct in-depth due diligence on the Eureka Springs Community Center's foundation, articles of incorporation, lease with the school district, and financial records of all income sources and detailed expenses. Mr. Thomas sectioned, seconded it, it carried 4-2. At the next meeting, before the meeting, I very clearly asked you, as the city attorney, did that not, that motion, did that not cover the parks? The mayor was sitting next to you at the time when you responded to it, and you said yes. So, I understand with the municipal league, and I totally agree with you, that the parks has the right, based on the municipal league codes, and I didn't write the number down, very clearly to enter into and engage at that time, but they don't have that right now, based on the motion that was made on January the 8th.
I think if you look at that in the light of what the council has done since then, and allowing them to go ahead with discussions, that given their ability to contract, that that has been negated.
You know, again, I'm not an attorney, but I disagree with you, because that's not what we did. You're taking something, we said that we would look at a memorandum, and we would take a look at the motion to whether to make an exception for the greenhouse. It was never decided, and that discussion was never negated, and it was never implied that the motion was being in any way redone. If it was going to be redone, then we should have legally handled it. I think you're taking a discussion or a political point of view and stretching it way too far.
Yes, Ms. Schneider.
What's your problem with letting parks go ahead and do something that's really good for the community? It's very simple, that's a very simple question. Why can't we just leave them alone to do their job, and you guys have your little war, and let parks alone and let the community center alone?
Any further discussion, Ms.?
The allowance that you're referring to, for them to engage, that was passed theoretically, was passed by motion at the March 12th meeting, and I gave you a copy of that and asked you to take a look at it, because that was the one that was so totally messed up that you couldn't figure out what we voted for, but you've never responded to me, in terms of specifically how you view that, that motion and all the rigmarole that got thrown in to it.
Well, as a response to you, I think that's the answer that I am coming to at this point, is that the action that was taken at that meeting was what allows them to do that. Now, as to answering the councilman's question directly to the councilman, I never understood you to be wanting a direct answer, but wanted it looked at and brought back to the council. And that's what I think I'm doing at this point, as the mayor's requested. And I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong. I still would like the municipal league's further guidance on the issue, but I don't think, from what the mayor's telling me and from what I'm hearing from the municipal league, that we're likely to get an answer anytime soon. And so, I'm trying to answer your question to the best of my ability.
Right.
I think the action that was taken that night can be read with an honest reading, to allow the parks to continue with the authority that they were originally given when parks was created.
That moment, I'm sorry I don't have the motion here tonight, but it had really nothing to do with anything except continuing discussions regarding the greenhouse.
And I think that's what they're doing at this point.
Right.
And that's what I think they're allowed to do.
Right, continue discussions. About that motion.
Mr. McCall?
I would like to make a motion to override Mr. Mitchell's motion in regards to parks and, and the city and the community center. Not exactly sure how to word it, but...
I'll second that.
Or to rescind that, that one, whatever you want to call it. Override it, rescind it.
Do you want to say it?
Rescind is good.
Let Mr. McClung make his own motion, please.
I'm sorry.
How is it that you want it said?
Override it, because if it was rescinded, it would be him doing it, so I would say that, to override that one.
And the second was Ms. Schneider, okay?
All right, discussion?
Yes. My problem with parks and the community center has nothing to do with the greenhouse per se, it's with the blended administration that parks has developed with the community center. It places me in a position that I don't know, when they come to me and say, we want to do this, this is good, I don't know how to take that, because they're not coming to me as independent parks commission, saying this is good. They're standing there as the parks people and the community center foundation all rolled into one, and that, that makes it problematic for me to, to vote yea or nay on anything that they want to do.
I think, Mr. Thomas, the way I would look at it is Bill Featherstone, the chairman of the Parks Commission, and he's representing, up here, he's representing the Parks Commission. Diane Murphy is the chairman of the, whatever it is, Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation. She represents and can speak for the foundation. Bill Featherstone does not have the authority to speak for that commission. He has the authority to speak for the park.
According to the paper that...
I'm telling you...
I'm telling you, I'm sorry, do I have the floor?
Yes, sir.
The paper that was handed to us by Jack Moyer showed that Bill Featherstone represented CCF on the greenhouse committee. That was his printout.
Mr. McCall?
You know, and that's all fine and good, but I think, I think we're splitting, trying to split hairs here, and, you know, I mean, it's coming down to where it's, you know, Mr. Featherstone is a volunteer on both of those entities, you know, and, and I think it's very important, you know, to appreciate that, and, you know, he has nothing to gain here financially. The only thing he's looking at is what he thinks is, is in the best interest of the city as long as the rest of those people that are involved in that. And, and quite frankly, I can't see where it's going to hurt us either, so, you know, I just, I don't know what the stumbling point is, but, you know, whenever it's time to vote, I'm here.
Any further discussion, Mr. Mitchell?
You know, this has nothing to do with the integrity of the Eureka Springs Community Center, what it is that they want to do, or anything like that. It is not anything negative about the integrity of any of the volunteers on the Eureka Springs Community Center or parks. To me, it has always been the separation of municipality, the taxes, the money, the employees, the equipment, and everything else that the municipality has being funneled into a 501(c)(3). When that 501(c)(3) was established by the Eureka Springs Foundation, they went out, knowing perfectly well exactly where their finances came from and what they wanted to do, they engaged with the school district, took over the debt and the obligation of the money that was there, and it seems like from the very beginning, and this is my view, what has happened with this community center, and let's use parks for example. Soon as Justin got here, he went to the state for tourism and applied for a grant about the trails around the community center. The state tourism came back and said, basically, no way can you be applying for a grant from the state to take the money and move it into a private organization on private property. You can't do it. You can't do it." Now, I don't know why Justin decided to do that on his own, because I don't think he did, I think he got direction somewhere, to be very honest. Somehow he got direction to turn around and apply again. And second time, he really got turned down by parks and tourism, it's like, "Come on, you know, we've already told you once, you're not doing it, but again." So along comes, all of a sudden then, that Dairy Hollow project and the grant that's going on down there, where the director of parks at that time came to city council, asked us for a resolution to support it, told us about the project, how the sidewalk was gonna be built. It was a wonderful, glorious sidewalk, all this is gonna be done. It's, it's most interesting to me, is after two times that the state says, "You can't go get grants and try and put them up there on private property," then all of a sudden, a grant that was applied for, for one purpose, that, that purpose now is, is, "Oh, it's way overdone, it's too much, blah, 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 blah."
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm, I'm not finished, and I have the floor, sir.
I know, you have the floor, but keep that on track of.
I am on track, you're just trying to distort again and get me off track, so please let me finish what I'm saying. Thank you. And then all of a sudden, that grant that was applied for down there doesn't apply any, anymore, and we, and the grant is attempted to be shifted, again, to a private entity. My point is that parks is part of the city, parks employees are paid by the city, they get their workman's comp by the city, and to be using them in a capacity to support a 501(c)(3) private entity, despite the wonderful things that it could do for the community and all the great people, this has nothing to do with it, is wrong. And that's why my motion was made the way it was originally. So, that's it.
Further discussion? If not, I've got a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk could read the motion.
The bones of it are, Mr. McClung moved to override Mr. Mitchell's motion.
Uh, let's have a vote, votes, roll call vote.
Okay. Mr. McClung?
Yes, but I, I need to, I need to make a statement real quick, and, and I think, don't we need to, to define what motion that that is? In, in that?
What was the date, January 8?
Uh, January the 8th, uh, city council meeting, it's under unfinished business, item number 2.
That works. Yes, and I, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
So, we have two yeses and three noes. Motion fails.
All right. Next item of business, uh, we're through that, to report from the mayor on the community center. Ironically, motion to discuss.
Some of.
Uh, I talked to Ms. Murphy, and she is going to, as soon as the audit is done, and the audit's not done, uh, she's gonna give us a copy of the latest audit. And I wouldn't, I had not read the motion about the articles of incorporation, but I'll get those also, those are, you know, with the Secretary of State, so that's no big deal. Any further comments?
And the lease with the school district.
Lease with the school district.
For review by this body. And as it, the motion says.
Any further comments? Yes, I understand.
Okay, so I'm confused. Once you get this information, does that mean that we can finally end this fiasco between the two parties? Because isn't that what it was all about, wanting to get, do, do diligence and get this info?
Remains to be seen.
That's brilliant.
All right, uh, bring this to, if there's nothing else, adjournments. Anyone?
I just, the auditorium would automatically carry over as postponed.
Anything postponed, yes. What was postponed?
All right, if not, uh, city council comments? Let me start the opposite end table, Mr. McLeod?
What is this, May? Beautiful weather. That's all I got.
I have thoroughly enjoyed tonight's meeting, I really have.
Ms. Schneider?
Last month was my son's birthday, today is my husband's birthday, he's really antique today. Mostly though, happy birthday, Steve, mostly I want to do best wishes, good luck, cross fingers, for, most of us know him, Dave, who was the co-manager at Over at Murdy's until he retired. He retired to Hawaii, his home was right square in the middle of the original eruption. Luckily, Dave was in California visiting somebody at the time. He was gonna go back last Tuesday, I haven't heard from him, so I don't know if he went back or not, knowing they weren't about to let him into that site. But I think it's a pretty much foregone conclusion, his home is probably gone. So, good luck, Dave, we love you here, you can always come back. That's it.
That's great.
I'm gonna echo Mr. McClung's, beautiful weather, town looks great.
Mr. Mitchell?
I mean, I think I'll pass, I've said enough.
All right. First of all, again, I wanna, I wanna reiterate what we did at the very beginning of the meeting, recognizing the veterans, and especially the Purple Hearts, and I'd see we still have a veteran to the very end at, at the meeting, so thank you again for all your services and that you've done for the country. To that, we can hardly say. Uh, as far as events going on, this is a wonderful month in Eureka Springs. Downstairs in the auditorium, the lower level, uh, May 13th through the 19th, we are having a national photography contest. If you haven't been, it's a great time to come out and look. Eli, uh.
Vega.
Vegas.
Vega.
Vegas.
Whitney?
Is an incredible photographer, and he's put together this contest, and it's a great thing to go down and look at, to get a chance to see. On the 5/16, now I just noticed, we got on the art wall, we got unveiling at noon, uh, down here on First Street, we've got some new art going up, uh, on that wall. Uh, we've redone the wall, and, and it looks good, and the new artwork is, from what I saw, it looks pretty outstanding.
I'm sorry, what Dave was saying? Sixteenth. Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. On the 18th, uh, one of our favorites, is the White Street Annual Walk, from 4 to 10. On White Street, obviously, uh, if you get a chance, a great time to come out and see all your friends and people from, that you haven't seen for the last year. On the 18th, we have what they call Off the Bean Path, which is a walk by Arbus Patty Erb, uh, starting at 9:00 a.m., uh, down here by the art wall and the native art path, art garden. And she's gonna be taking a walk, talking about all the native plants around Eureka Springs, it should be a great time. Uh, the 17th through the 19th, on the south side of the courthouse, uh, which is, on the other side of the courthouse, for those who don't know the north from the south in Eureka, uh, they're having the chalk art festival. Uh, it's gonna be all day, starting at 17th and ending on the 19th. This should be a great time, we're getting people from all across the United States to come in and participate in this. On the 19th, we have Jonathan Bird playing in the music in the park, from 5 to 7. And also on the 19th, uh, at noon, we'll have the Harmon Park mural, uh, opening or revealed, down at Harmon Park, uh, so you get a chance and go out and see that. On the 20th is one of my favorites, Books in Blooms, from noon to 5, up at Crescent Hotel. If you like to read, this is a chance to get up and meet some authors, uh, international authors that come in, and great time and great readings going on. On the 5, May 21st through 24th, the plein air festival, uh, all over town, this is artists will be set up painting Eureka Springs, and this again, could be a great, great event that we're having. On the 25th, uh, and the 26th, but on the 25th, we'll have a Celebrate Jesus in the park, and then on the 26th, at 2:00 p.m., we'll have the Celebrate Jesus Parade. And then that evening, at 6:30 p.m. in the auditorium, is the Air Force Band, and it's free, and they are incredible.
What day's that?
The Air Force Band on the 26th in the auditorium.
Excellent.
If you hadn't had a chance to listen to them, they're just outstanding, uh, they're great musicians. That's all I have, if I get a motion to, to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No move, thank you.